I'd like to call to order the Monmouth City Council meeting of Tuesday, April 2nd, and ask our city recorder, Phyllis Bowman, to do the roll call.
Counselor Belts?
Here.
Counselor Carey?
Here.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Sharmar?
Here.
Counselor Schinkel?
Here.
Counselor Silbernagle?
Here.
Mayor Koontz?
Here. And if we could do the flag salute and Counselor Silbernagle, if you could lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a rather full agenda tonight, so we'll go ahead and get started. I do have a couple of things this evening. One is regarding our public comments, and so I'd like to welcome our folks to the Monmouth City Council meeting. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under citizen comments. If you wish to speak to counsel, please fill out a comment card and turn it in to the city recorder or myself. Speakers' comments in this form are limited to three minutes, but the council welcomes additional information in writing, and typically the comment is taken under advisement. So, we may not comment, we may not ask further questions at this time, but we may ask our staff to maybe respond if we have something that we would like to know. And then, on the comment card, there is an option to get follow-up information, either in writing or phone call, and people let us know about that, and we will get back to them. So, thank you for your attendance, everyone, at this meeting of the Monmouth City Council. I'm also going to read another script that this evening, at the end of our meeting, we will also meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing ORS 192 662D, Labor Negotiator Consultations. This executive session is held pursuant to the ORS cited, which allows the council to meet in executive session. Designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience will be asked to leave the room. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room. This evening, it is not anticipated that action will be taken after returning from executive session. That will be a little later on. So, I'll start our regular meeting with our consent agenda, which this evening consists of approval of the minutes of the council meeting of March 19th, 2019. Counselor Sharmar moved, and Counselor Silbernagle seconded, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. This evening, for my mayor's report, I do have a few things that I've been taking care of, sort of in the interim here. And first, I would like to give my congratulations to Chief Darrell Talan, who's with us tonight, who was named the Monmouth Independence Distinguished Citizen of 2018 by our Chamber of Commerce. He was recognized for leading several events at the police department, which benefited our community, including the annual canned food drive challenge, some toy drives, and raising money towards a local child's medical needs. So, congratulations, chief. That was well deserved.
Appreciate that.
We are also able to cut the ribbon on the new home of our Monmouth Power and Light Building, and our superintendent, Chuck Thurman, is here, and I just wanted to say it was a true homage to conservation, which of course is a feature of our Power and Light Department, but repurposing, reusing, begging, borrowing, no known theft of materials and furnishings in the city inventory, and it was a beautiful place. It will allow for much more effective service, especially in the weather in which we most depend on our Power and Light staff. And there will be a formal opening, open house soon, I believe, so everybody else will get to see this really well-thought-out and thrifty new city facility. We held our Housing Needs Inventory Open House on Wednesday, the 20th of March, and that was a really good opportunity to sort of learn about some very technical inputs into such a study that are required by our state under our comprehensive planning statutes. We had some input. People at the session were able to give input onto the type of housing they would like to see us develop or consider in the future to keep Monmouth's character. And the materials from that meeting are on the city's website, so if you search "housing needs" on the website, there is additional information, including the slideshow we saw and a lot of the materials, and that topic will be on the agenda for our Planning Commission on April 16th, so they'll have another opportunity for the public to follow that. Also, I know where some of us have been able to be at the legislature and to follow a lot of the legislation that's being considered in Salem that affects cities. We do have lobbyists through the League of Oregon Cities, but it's really more impactful for folks to hear from us than our lobbyists. And there are a couple of things being considered. I think sort of the number-one area of concern for cities is House Bill 2001. It's a well-meaning measure intended to provide more affordable housing statewide, but there are some provisions that could cause some concern, one of those being to require us to allow up to four plexes in single-family residential neighborhoods. And some of the concerns about that, and it's in cities over 10,000, which is uncomfortably close to our current population, and there really isn't a consideration for impacts on infrastructure, sewage, water, even our transportation plan, which was designed years in advance with a certain number and density of housing in those areas. So, we've, that's one you might want to follow and see if we can do anything to sort of make it fit better for towns our size, for those, the very smallest of those 10,000s. So, we welcome the opportunity to be creative as we meet our need for housing and growth, but we'd like to have local control over that. That needs to really fit what's best for us and not some of those larger cities that we would be lumped in with. Those are some of the things I have been doing in our off-time. And I will now ask for some other council reports. We've had several of you busy at boards and commission hearings, doing all the great work they do. So, Counselor Sharmar, Senior Advisory Board.
All right, thank you. First of all, a reminder that the best $6 breakfast in town will be this Saturday at the Senior Center, right over here, with pancakes and syrup and eggs and sausage and biscuits and all kinds of wonderful things. The Monmouth Senior Advisory Board met on March 26th, and they had some announcements. The long-term care ombudsman will be available at the Senior Center sometime in April, sometime this month. I suspect it will be Natasha Cronin. An ombudsman is a volunteer citizen who visits retirement homes and nursing homes to check with the patients or the people who are there, to make sure everything is going well with them. Major things like perhaps a health issue not being dealt with to minor things, that there aren't salt shakers on the table. So, that will be available over in the Senior Center in April. On the 24th of April, there will be a presentation on effective communication strategies, and on the 23rd, there will be a presentation about the ODOT work going on up on Highway 99, and it looks like it's really going on in earnest now. They had a meet-and-greet for 16 people, and they have travel planned to the beach, to the Tulip Festival, and a four-to-five-day trip to eastern Oregon, so sign up for that if you're, if you think you're a senior, or even if you're not. There were some Chinese visitors who came to the Senior Center and spent some time interacting with the people who were there, telling them a little bit about what life is like in China, and they very much appreciated that. They also approved their goals for the near and long term. One of them was to get a bulletin board in the Senior Center. Another was to get better advertising around the neighborhood around here. Our, the chair, or the president, I guess, of the board pointed out that when we first did the surveys for the Monmouth Engaged Program, there were about 15 people who returned surveys saying it would be really nice if we had a Senior Center here in Monmouth. So, better advertising is one of their goals, and then, an increase in multicultural programs as well. And I think that's about it, so, thank you.
See you as always. And Counselor Carey, planning.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the Planning Commission has been meeting fairly frequently, and you touched on some of the things, but the big focus right now really is the Housing and Residential Lands Needs Survey that we're working with a consultant on. We did have the open house on the 20th and gathered some information, and you know, that really is key to one of our goals last year and coming up, and that is to deal with the urban growth boundary. And this information will be key to that in terms of being able to determine whether it can be expanded and how, if it can be modified, how we would do that. A number of the agenda items that are on our agenda tonight are a product of the good work that the Planning Commission has been doing, and so we'll resolve some of those, I believe, this evening. There is a meeting tomorrow, April 3rd, tomorrow evening, at 7:00 PM, and on that agenda, there's a discussion of a sign code variance that a property owner is requesting that seems reasonable enough. And then, perhaps on a larger note, the expansion of the Main Street District. You know, we passed the variance up here on the corner for Ron Wilson home, and there's some thought that that, it might be, there might be some utility in expanding it further down the street, and I got to look at the different options on that. And of course, they'll have a recommendation, and that will come ultimately to the council. But, so those are the things that are sort of on the docket and what's been going on with Planning Commission.
Great, thank you. As you say, we've got a lot of their work they've been working on, and if we can cross those, so. And Darren Silbernagle, our Tree Advisory Board.
Great, thank you. Tree Advisory Board did not meet this past month, but they do have an activity this Saturday that folks are invited to, and that's Arbor Day Tree Planting, and that's at Madrona Park at 9:00 AM. So, if folks would like to come join and plant a few trees and maybe move some bark or whatever, it'd be great.
That is great. We don't even have to do the weeding or anything. It's, we will be celebrating Arbor Day, so, thank you. And Counselor Lopez, MINET.
MINET Board did not meet this past month. However, I have taken a look at the financials, and the underage that was a result of the outage from the end of this previous year has largely caught up and corrected itself. So, it looks like, it looks like we're back on track regarding the finances despite that. And the reason that that would happen this year as opposed to the previous year, even though the outage was last year, is that when the, when those revenues come in, it's always, it's always delayed by one period, and those credits that had to be issued were delayed into January. And so, it's nice to see that that's back on track. I also did take the time that the MINET Board would have normally met, and I drove out to Dallas to look at their new office there as part of the Dallas expansion, doing those upgrades, but that is an ongoing project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And any community announcements? What else is going on in town? Quiet period, huh? That's okay. We'll take a little bit of a lull, and we'll move on. Scott McClure, our City Manager, what do you have for us?
Thank you, just a few things. Police Department, they're recruiting now for the Community Service Officer, and it's a position that's always got more than enough work, and then now we're going into vegetation season, so it makes it a little bit worse to have a gap, so we'll have to adjust to that, but we'll get there. Lot of work on the budget. Interesting one that comes into that is one thing we always do is we do growth projections, because that plays into system development charges, where we might get more revenue. What's fascinating is, we were initially using like 65 units coming online next year, so if you look at the South Town Apartments, housing projects, other things, with how the pace of those are going, it's going to probably be above that. We'll probably keep it there just to be conservative. But then, the other interesting one is Chuck Thurman took a look at electric load just on that project, and then just the Ash Creek Station site on the S-curve, and there's some serious load coming on there, so that's going to be a lot of extra revenue coming on in all those funds, so that's, I'll just kind of boost things and kind of spread things out a little bit more, so those are all good things. And then, on the Mid-Vallam, the Housing Initiative, Homelessness Initiative, had a really productive meeting just recently on that, and a big discussion there is what they call Continuum of Care and how you move forward. And so, a big discussion is whether Polk and Marion County right now are just in the, basically, a state pool. It's very ineffective to manage. We're not getting as much money, so they're looking at ways to shift that, and so, I had a good presentation on that. They came to the Polk Mayor's Meeting on Friday. Mayor and I got that presentation, and then, they're going to be basically going around and trying to get support to do this, because they need everybody on board. Interesting twist in there is, Polk and Marion makes sense, because we're pretty integrated on services. Yamhill makes sense, because we're integrating a lot of things, but not on homeless services. So, you'd have to figure out if you had Polk and Marion here kind of integrated, but if Yamhill was someplace else, that might be hard to, unless you'd have, just have some arrangements. It takes some work. It'd be quite a bit of work to get there, but I think everybody's committed to doing that. And then, one on a project, to try to get that money spent down from our bike-ped funds we need to, we're going to be doing a sidewalk project on Clay Street, and so that'll actually take care of the Brant side, so it'll actually fill in that. And then, on the other side, just get the gap where the Mobile Home Park is, we'll get that covered, and then just down the block right here by the library, there's a section, so we'll get all those things filled in and get that taken care of, and that'll get us back in compliance on that, so. That'll start probably pretty soon.
Great. Yeah, that was something we had asked our good committees to try to determine some priorities there that would fit within that pot of dollars we needed to spend that we've been collecting.
And what's really good, I think, it was kind of nice, you'll get more of a report from Russ later on the transportation priorities, and what I thought was really good with the Bike-Ped Committee, instead of getting really prescriptive down to "we want this project, this project," they said, "Get people to the main roads and then get them across the main roads." That was their core philosophy. They didn't get down to "we want this project, this project," or, it was like, just get people safely to where they need to be and get them across the road safely. It was like, that's a pretty good principle to work from, so.
I have a question. The Polk County Commissioners were pretty much of a mind that they didn't want to join this continuum of care for homelessness, so how would you see the consortium put together? Would, if Monmouth approves it and Independence, I don't know about Dallas, they didn't approve it before, would they fit in with Marion County and Kaiser in Salem as well? Just have one county, I don't know if I'm pointing in the right direction over there, and then cities here?
Yeah, I guess the interesting one is the perspective on that. I, they said the Polk County Commissioners were in favor.
Well, they said, when I was there, they said absolutely not. We want, we want local control over this.
See, that's interesting, unless there's a little nuance in there, because the folks from the COG and our coordinator right now, they said that the Commissioners were involved, and I checked with one of the Commissioners on Friday, and they said they're absolutely. I wonder if it's a subtype thing, like maybe they're okay with the broader, but they still want some control over here or something.
It was the, it was the program to apply for grant funds through HUD, and then, for competitive grants for that, and they said, "No, we, thank you very much. Homelessness has not, has gotten worse since we donated our last money, and so we're not going to participate in this. We want local control." Huh, okay, well, maybe they say different things to me than they do to you.
We'll be confirming that again.
But I guess the broader question is, yes, you would, you know, obviously, if an application went into HUD to consolidate, and they had completely mixed-bag responses from the cities and the counties in that area, that wouldn't work very well.
Wouldn't look good. And I think that's why, and the COG is sort of coordinating this, they will be coming around, talking to each jurisdiction and determining this.
Eventually, they would like, yeah, formal letters of support.
It, it's an interesting concept, because as Scott said, we're in a consortium. We're already in a consortium. It's called, everybody in the state that doesn't have its own consortium is a consortium. And so, having this Marion Polk or Marion Polk-Yamhill actually gives us local control we don't currently have, so I think that was an interesting.
And one element that was in there is too, just, there's a per-capita number, that's kind of like, maybe call it a first tier. There's a second tier that's based on how good you are at it. How are you addressing, and that's, there's a lot of scoring that's based on data collection, and if you're 26 counties, there isn't any data collection. There is no coordination. So, our group right now can't even access those higher-tier funds, you know, so that would be a good reason to do it.
I think the other interesting thing to point out about all this, I think, when people picture homelessness, especially those who are in downtown Salem or downtown Portland or large cities, and they're picturing that we're entering into some kind of agreement to deal with that, to deal with people, often adult men, often, you know, people with other issues, but what homelessness really addresses is things like the dozens of children in our school district who don't have a permanent place to sleep. They're in cars, they are on relatives' couches, they are moving, one week they're in Dallas, the next week they're over here. They're, you know, teen runaways, children, so there's a lot of other people who are considered homeless and who are served by these grants that aren't, that we do have a problem with. If people think we don't have that problem here in Polk County, we do. And so, it's a good opportunity for us to educate folks about the needs in our counties, social service needs, and some of these opportunities to leverage federal dollars to help with that.
This HUD grant is specifically to put together a strategic plan for how to deal with it, not actually
Serving.
dealing with the homelessness issue right now, but just to put a plan together.
So, we'll be hearing more about that issue. We have on our agenda some reports from our boards and commissions, but I don't see a lot of folks here from those boards and commissions, do we?
Have a representative from the Traffic Safety Commission, I'm not sure about seniors.
We do, but I don't see our senior advisory folks here, so.
Don't either.
Can I just disconnect? Yep, well, look at them. Oh, okay. Well, we'd love to talk about traffic safety, because we have a couple of folks here to hear about this commission. This is the one with the busiest meeting schedule of all.
Thank you, Mayor Koontz, members of the council. Tonight, you will just get two staff members, as members of the Traffic Safety Commission, myself, Darrell Talan, police chief.
Russ Cooper, Public Works Director.
And unfortunately, our two other members, Mike Kissel and Lyle Gilbert, were unable to make it this evening, and our third citizen member is vacant, that position is vacant right now. We put together just a quick list of some things to let you know what we've been working on since the last time we reported to council. We've addressed a few parking issues, view obstruction issues, some speeding complaints, and those types of things, and when those issues come forward, because I sit on the commission and Russ, usually, those issues are something that we can take back to our staff, and we can take care of those things pretty quickly. And just as an example, if there's a speeding issue, I can take that back, I put that in our briefing notes, and we try to get officers out to those areas. And then, we also have a speed radar trailer that will deploy out to those locations also to try to mitigate some of those speeding issues. And so, like I said, a lot of it, both Russ and I can take care of internally and kind of monitor those things as we go. We resolved a parking issue, view obstruction issue, that was on General Avenue and Knox Street intersection. There's a little bit of a funny configuration there at that intersection with the width of General Avenue, and with just a little bit of, we, of some changes to the actual parking on, what would it be, on the northwest side of that intersection?
Yep.
I think we were able to mitigate that problem and haven't had any more complaints on that. In fact, the person
Positive feedback.
Yeah, we had some real positive feedback from the person that brought that to our attention and was happy with the results. Speed study, we requested a speed study to be done on the south end of Highway 99. I think we talked a little bit about that to the council, maybe at a previous meeting, and because of the current construction that's going on on Highway 99, it'd be a little difficult right now to get real good data because of that construction. And so, I think what Russ got back from ODOT was that they would either wait until there was a good window period to actually conduct that speed study during the construction, but actually, most likely, they're probably going to wait until that project is done, and then they'll conduct the speed study.
Yeah, they want driver behavior to be normal or unimpacted, and obviously, when you have cones and lane changes and all of that, it impacts the normalness of your driving behavior.
We've also, and again, this is something that we talked with council a little bit, and I think it actually was something that, that one of the counselors, I can't remember one or two of the counselors, brought this forward also, was the fact that if and when a new subdivision goes in on Hoffman Road, which we heard a little bit about the potential for that happening, we're going to ask Polk County to do a speed study out there on Hoffman Road, because it's our belief that we're going to probably have to adjust the speeds out there because of the residential continuing to the west of 16th Street. So, as soon as that project is actually in progress, we're, depending on when they feel the right time to do it, is we'll go ahead and have that done too, and make sure that we get the right speeds out there on Hoffman Road. And then, I think Russ is going to talk a little bit about a couple of these things, because they're actually things that are on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, so, one that's not on the agenda, but that the Traffic Safety Commission has looked at, and they were the ones who recommended it, was the recommendation was that the city buy what's called a traffic data collector, and it's a device we mounted on power poles, light poles, and it, it datalogues vehicle behavior, driver behavior, how fast you're driving, how many vehicles go past a, this particular spot, and what direction they're going. The recommendation to get it was for a couple of reasons. When we receive these citizen complaints about speeding, this device, the more we gather this data, the better we understand what's really happening on our collector streets. We'll be able to have more, just factual data in order to support or to deal with those requests. It also helps in, when we are getting those requests, we can look at the data and get a real good sense of when enforcement really needs to be out there, because you can, it timestamps when vehicles are going fast, and you can trend a chart that shows you what time of day would be best to be out there. So, as far as, you know, getting the best out of our enforcement, we can do that as well. And then, it, you know, if we are seeing excessive speeds or trending speed, you know, higher speeds, it allows us to make better decisions in determining different types of traffic control devices. So, it's been a good, it's been a good purchase. The information has been interesting for me to look at. I don't know how the commission necessarily feels about all the data, but it has been good. The other, another is, the Traffic Safety Committee has looked at and discussed the Madrona Crosswalk. That's another project that's kind of in a, in a holding pattern for now while we go through this construction project. Once it's done, we're going to do a count study, basically, a count of the vehicle movements as well as pedestrian movements at that intersection. From that data, ODOT can, you know, we can work with ODOT on coming up with some resolutions to improving that crosswalk. Tonight, on Tonight, on the agenda will be a crosswalk recommendation for over on Stadium Drive, had a citizen come in, you know, request that we give it consideration. Traffic Safety Commission looked at it, as well as we invited the university to come up and participate in that discussion. And both parties, it was a nice joint effort at improving that situation. And so you'll have a recommendation and opportunity to discuss that this evening as well. And then the transportation project priority list. The group got an opportunity to look at those and provide some recommendations. And so we'll discuss those some more this evening. And in general, their comments were very similar to what I heard earlier. Let's get people out of the roads, onto sidewalks. And so that was a good discussion as well, and the university representatives participated in that discussion as well.
Okay.
And that's it.
Any questions about our Traffic Safety Commission? Yes?
You have already mentioned this, but the ladies at my Tuesday afternoon knitting group, who are also avid walkers, asked me to tell you that crossing Highway 99 at Madrona is a very perilous undertaking right now. And I'm just wondering if there might be someone who'd be willing to volunteer that they, who could be given a pair of white gloves and a whistle, since the crosswalk doesn't, no longer exists there. There was just sort of a little alleyway and then takes you out into the middle of the street and then you have to run for your life. You don't know in these fallen streets who love to stop traffic. It's kind of a powerful feeling, you know?
That are licensed and certified.
Okay, all right. So I have done my duty. They asked me to tell you that.
And I will convey to the contractor as well that concern.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, John?
Russ, you mentioned that, that traffic recording device that we've had, we've had, I think now for a couple of years.
Little over a year.
Little over a year, okay. So what are we learning from that? You talked in general terms.
Okay, yeah.
But
So in general, citizens in Monmouth drive slightly slower than the speed limit. The, the number of, that's the posted speed limit, the number of vehicles that actually travel down a road in, in a week was a lot more than I thought in the numbers of 15,000 trips going by. And these typically, where, what our plan is, is we're putting them on our collector streets, Clay Street, Gwynne Street, Madrona, Edwards Road, and trying to just collect data on those, because that's where we try to get people to those streets. And those provide the longest runs between stop signs. So even though we, you know, we've got higher volumes and the opportunity to speed in general, Monmouth citizens are actually driving slightly below the speed limit. There are data points that make you go, why was somebody driving 65 miles an hour down a particular street? But, but those are, those are, you know, what do you call those outliers? You know, it's not the standard. So is there more information that you would be interested in?
Well, I'd be interested, you know, you talk about trip counts and so forth. I mean, will that be part of, of your recommendations relative to, you know, the, some of the transportation money that we're going to be spending?
Certainly could be, yes.
In terms of overlays and reworks and that kind of thing?
Certainly could be.
Yeah, because that seems to be, that's one of the things that, I mean, if we're concerned with overuse and, and wearing out, that would be helpful to know that. We've heard about speeding on Madrona, is that true or false?
Yeah, the average is right at what the posted speed is.
Average.
The average.
Right.
So that means there's as many speeders as there are unders.
Well, yeah, you can, yeah, you can look at it that way, yes. Oh, and then, and then, so it breaks out, you know, you can get a sense of it, but, but most of them are less than, they're kind of maybe five miles over. So there's a, there's a whole bunch in this, five below, five above. That's where most people are at.
Sure, yeah. You know, when we talked about the speeding and we heard the complaints about speeding on Highway 99, I think a lot of that had to do with southbound, going out of town. I've got a lot of concern in whether or not your device could be used with this speeding coming into town on 99. And even though, and that's into a construction zone. And while I don't have any, honestly, the way I sort of judge that is the urgency and frequency that I hear Jake brakes at 5:00 in the morning. That tells me they're going too fast if they're having to hit them that hard. And, you know, that is a, and Chief, we've had conversation about that and I understand there's a lot of challenges with that, but I'm telling you, that is a, that is a, an issue down there. And I'm, I'm hoping we got a bunch of speeders and we could pinch them at times.
That's on the north end of town.
North end coming into town, yeah. Because, you know, they'll start, they'll start hitting them, you know, out there just bef, well, well before they get across the bridge and then all the way through, depending. And that starts at 3:00 in the morning, those early loads out, you know, with the larders.
Right, so our, our current policy was not to, you know, put it, put them up on the, you know, ODOT highways, but
Well, I don't know that you'd break that necessarily, but I, but I do have a little bit of safety concern coming into a construction zone. You know, that, that would be the
Yeah, and unfortunately, at that point, they're already in the construction zone because, I mean, the construction zone starts out at
Sure, but the
Hoffman, but yeah, no, I
Implants and the barriers and all of that.
Yeah, one thing that I have seen a lot more is, is this project has some grant money for state troopers and I don't, maybe even, I'll let you talk about it.
Yeah, we don't get any of that, but, but there, the state does have, as part of that project, you'll see a state trooper out there that will patrol that construction zone, not 24/7.
Yeah, right.
But I'm not exactly sure what their schedule is, but we do see someone out there. But, you know, to answer your question about what we can do there, that's certainly something that I can put out to my staff and we can watch that even closer. You would think, and I've had a lot of people comment, that since we've moved to the location that we're at right now, that that shouldn't be a deterrent. We've not seen that.
No.
And, but we can certainly be out there and do our best to see what we can't do to mitigate some of that.
Because it's, it's distracting and wakes you up
Yeah.
From, you know, probably two blocks either side of 99, all the way to Craven, probably.
Right.
And likely Sacree going that way, and I don't know what it is to the west, but, and again, my only assumption is, is they're going faster than they ought to be. So that was the reason for the question.
And I'll, I'll mention that to the contractor as well.
Yeah.
So see if they can talk to the state police about maybe stationing out there.
Yes, Byron.
Have we learned anything about the other entrances into town? I know we talked a while ago, concerned about people coming in on Riddle Road, the speed coming into, you know, right there into campus, as well as I think heading north on Helmick Road into town. Have we used that device to learn anything on those, in those areas?
We, we have the data. I'm, nothing is jumping out that's significant about those locations. I know that, that we had, as a group, had talked about looking at whether or not the data will justify putting in the electronic reader boards that let folks know what, what speed they're going. At this point, we, so, and then in order to get around to all of our collectors and points on collectors, and you put it out there for a week, it basically takes us a year to get around to all of those. So we're, we're still low on data to make good decisions.
Okay, all right. But that is something that
Yes.
You're focusing on, okay, good.
Okay, thank you very much. And we will postpone our report from the Senior Advisory Board. Barbara wasn't able to be here, so.
Okay.
And speaking of boards and commissions, you received a copy of an application from Shelby Morgan of Monmouth, who's interested in serving on the Arts and Culture Commission. She was a student at Western and now works there and had the opportunity to confirm that she is interested and would, will be able to attend the next meeting next week. So we're, thank you to Phyllis Bullman for getting word out in the Woo newspaper, as well as all of our other media outlets. She did a little interview and got some attention that way. So I would accept a nomination for Shelby Morgan to the Arts and Culture Commission.
I move that Shelby Morgan be appointed to the Monmouth Arts and Culture Commission.
I second. You can second.
They'll fight over it. I know, I'm fighting over members for the Arts and Culture Commission, right, Judy? So one of our members here. I will take a vote on that nomination. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed. All right, thank you. Very excited to have another person who's interested in that organization. This is the time we do have set aside for citizen comments, and these are for comments that are not on items on the agenda. As we come upon our other items that are under our business agenda, we will be taking some comments to those specific topics. So for this, we do have Pam Sarah Wentz is in the audience, and she had a couple of comments for us. If you'd like to come up, Pam, and just let us know about the things you are interested in, we do have three minutes to hear about the topics that you wanted to present to us. And if you could just, again, say your name in case I messed it up, and the city where you reside.
I'm Pam Sarah Wentz. I live in Monmouth for about the last two and a half years. And since I moved in, I noticed I kept getting these notifications in the monthly newsletter about water. And it seems that now we've possibly resolved the issues that had been there, which is pleasing to see that. But I did have a question about, are we testing to make, ensure that the quality of the water is sustaining after we've remediated what the issue was? Are we doing follow-up testing?
That's the kind of question we'll refer to an expert in the room, and the one who was just sitting in that chair is sitting behind you.
Yes, we are.
He is nodding at us, so that is under our Public Works Department. And Russ Cooper is the person you can talk to about that further.
Another thing is bike lanes. My other two questions have to do with, I guess, transportation in some form and another, whether it's pedestrian or bicycle. I like to bike. If the streets are narrow, it's a little tougher, and if there's not a bike lane, it's, it can be a little ridiculous. So I do, you know, and in many small communities, of course, you're not going to have that on the side streets, but on the main streets, it's something you kind of expect as a, as a person who likes to hop on their bike and take off for a few minutes and take a ride. So that's one thing I just wanted to put in your ear and have you consider. There's a lot of people who, in the community, come and visit Independence as well as Monmouth, and to have a good transport between the two towns, as well as within the towns, would be really beneficial, especially if you're getting people here for cycling events. It would really cater to that part of the, of the people that come into the area. And my other thing is the sidewalks. I was really appreciating, I appreciated hearing about sidewalks as a discussion because there's so many areas that I am walking on the streets. I walk every day. And, and what I notice is there is a lack here and there. And I noticed one of our neighbors had, probably within about two blocks, he was out there, he was very proud of the sidewalk going in, and I was not real sure if he was paying for it or if it was coming. I heard tonight there was some type of fund or something that, so, you know, and, and I kind of looked at his roof and I thought, you know, I hope he's not paying for it because he really needs to get a new roof. So I hope that if there is some funds that, I don't know, are we, are we asking the residents to pay for it, or are we paying for the sidewalks? How is that working at this point?
Well, so there are a couple of different ways to fund sidewalks. We actually are going to talk a little bit more about that later on in the agenda. And that has been a topic we've been looking at really comprehensively as a council, so maybe we could answer some specific questions for you later.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And any other comments about items not on the agenda? Sure, come on up. And I'll take that from you, so we have contact information in case you'd like to hear back from us. Thank you so much. And your name and the city where you are?
Hi, I'm, my name is Ryan Narce. I live on, well, there's some contention about how it's pronounced, Sacra or Sacree or whatever the long controversy here in Monmouth is for the pronunciation of that street. So I'm a resident of Monmouth, obviously. And I'm just here because I am at my wit's end about the peacock noise that I'm experiencing in the neighborhood. And I've, I've been there for about, coming on four years now. I feel like I managed to plow through the first couple of years, just sort of enjoying the plumage and, and being sort of, I don't know, convivial with the neighbors and watching people stop their cars and take pictures and stuff. But it, I feel like we've got about three or four fully grown males at this point who now make horrendous shrieking noises every time a car door is opened or closed, a person says something loudly, someone sneezes, anything. And it's going on from pretty much morning till night, and we're currently in the rut. And I spent, I can't tell you how many hours phoning public agencies to find that, in fact, Department of Agriculture, or Wildlife, or Polk County Sheriff, or someone has got to be able to, to deal with this. And finally, I contacted Monmouth Police, thinking maybe there's animal control, to which they responded, nope, not us. And they informed my lovely wife that you probably want to go to a city council meeting and bring it up with the city council. And so I find myself for the first time interacting with a city council. And so I just, I'm here to ask what we could possibly do to make these noises go away.
Thank you, Ryan. And typically, we don't answer questions like that. And that one is one of the ongoing longest questions, other than was this a dry town because the college land would revert to the university, which was basically a 150-year question. The peacocks is right behind that.
Oh, good. So I really just opened it right back up. All right, well
That's okay.
I just, I guess then I just
A couple of your neighbors are here, and so they'll they'll vouch for you. We'll be glad to sort of respond to that. And I, you've, you've really done yeoman's work contacting all the possible agencies. And we've been, been here before. We'll kind of catch up with you separately, and thank you, so I appreciate we gave some contact information.
I just appreciate being heard.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I could give you one little piece of advice. If you want to drop a few of them over in Edwards Edition, they'll be, all be gone
Oh, yeah?
In a week or two.
They can figure out that at Edwards Edition?
We all work together.
Well, someone will give me the tools.
We are on the edge of town, we have coyotes.
I will, I will, I will tell you, anyone who will give me equipment, I will find a way to get them over there. But anyhow, I don't want to, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, so we do have our business agenda this evening, and it is lengthy. Maybe try and get through a few of these before we, we take a few minute break. And I'll just let you know, on our agenda, there are two first readings of ordinances. And typically, in the past, our process for the first reading of an ordinance was literally just to read the title of the ordinance and, and that was it. I've talked to City Manager McClure, and we've kind of thinking about taking a different tack here tonight at the will of the council. And that is, even though these ordinances that we have tonight have been, they've come to council, would you like to have this under consideration? And they've both gone, in this case, to our planning commission. They've had meetings, public hearings, we've had staff reports. It's come back to us to say, would we like, are we ready to draft an ordinance? And we have indicated yes. These ordinances are the product of that. So typically, we just read the title, and then at the second reading, we kind of get in additional comments, or we consider whether or not that's the final product. And so I think we want to try tonight to take comment and product. And so, I think we want to try tonight to take comment and determine whether or not these are really what we were talking about, and get a little bit more public participation at the first reading level. So, if that's, okay, we're going to give that a shot. Because apparently, there's nothing that says we don't, we can't.
This hasn't been noticed for public hearing, though. So, the public has not been informed of an opportunity for testimony for and against? You're just, you're just talking about public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think we've always operated it.
Yeah.
People couldn't go to many item.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just, these have had public hearings.
Right.
Yes.
For the formal.
Yes. These are the ordinances.
Yeah, oh, I know, I know, I know. Yeah. Of course, the ordinances, you, you've had essentially the language, the ordinances in front of you. So, there's nothing new in the ordinances to speak of.
No.
Okay, well, let's see how it goes.
Okay.
A little bit uneasy. There's been a public, public notice where anybody who wants to has put on notice, said, let's come and talk.
Right.
There may be people who don't know that this has been essentially opened up again. Is that it?
I think we've, we've taken comments at the second reading in the past.
Yeah. Okay, well, yeah. Okay, yeah. It sounds like this may be a little bit more extensive than, okay, all right, well, let's, let's see how it goes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We don't get sued, we're in good shape. Yes.
Prior to moving to the, to the business agenda officially, I understand that there was a, was a letter sent, sent
Pardon me?
By, on behalf of a, a citizen to the council. Is that best to be read during citizen comments here?
Thank you for reminding me. I made a note, but I made it in the wrong spot on the agenda. We do have, did get a letter to be asked to be read into the public record this evening. And that actually, based on the conversation, we had at our retreat and some of the communication agreements we had, we had determined that those sorts of things we would ask Phyllis Bowman to read into the record for us, rather than have one of us read. So, thank you, Chris, for that reminder. And Phyllis, if you want to read that for us. And those letters are limited, limited to the same three minutes, and it didn't appear to me that letter would take three minutes. So, we'll have that read now.
To Monmouth City Council and Mayor, I made several requests in front of the council prior to the election in November to have financial help for the sidewalk I was forced to replace. I hope the city will secure funding through a monthly fee of up to $1 for homeowners to repair and replace sidewalks. The one in front of my home could have been patched, but the contractors all said it would cost me as much to do patches as to do the full replacement. I was charged $3,521. It has been a terrible thing for me to deal with financially and has been the cause of much stress since then. That does affect my health as a senior citizen with a heart problem, and many things to cope with, including disabilities of my sons who may, who need my help. I do not have that money, as my low income shows. When the sidewalk was excavated before the new cement was poured, there was a huge root directly underneath pushing through the soil from the big-leaf maple tree of the next-door neighbor that had pushed up the sidewalk. I asked if it would be removed so the problem would not happen again, and the contractor said no, because it would harm the tree. The trees need to be removed to avoid that. I know there are many homeowners who are like me and can't afford to replace sidewalks that are used by the public, and we should not have to. We do pay taxes to Monmouth, and the sidewalks in front of my house on Powell is very much a pedestrian thoroughfare and a path that is walked constantly by students and faculty at Wu and the public. Please care about the people who live here, who own homes and do not have the financial means to pay a very large amount of money to replace a public sidewalk. I ask that you please reimburse me for the cost of the public sidewalk in front of my home. Sincerely, Karen Wagner.
Okay. Thank you for reading that. And just.
Wasn't there another one? Was there another comment that came in about it?
There was another.
Not asked to be read into the public.
Okay.
There was, we got an email about an issue, but it wasn't asked to be read.
Yes, it was about the bed and breakfast.
Yes.
Airbnb.
Okay. So, our first item this evening is to adopt our 2019-2020 goals. And I think we have our city staff report here, and I can ask Manager McClure to kind of review that. But I think the important part of this was, we really had a great discussion about what goals are. And I think we all agree that the items we want to focus on, and we are getting input on, as Counselor Carey mentioned, are, are really projects and tasks that sort of lead to a definition of the kind of city we want to be. And we'd like to get more input on that. So, these were seen, there are four items that basically are things we want to see completed, and we have oversight of, even though we don't particularly always directly manage these items. And I, I'd like to go ahead and have Scott kind of review those for us, and adopt those four items separately, and then we'll discuss some of our other really overarching objectives for the year.
Yep, yep, thank you. And I think, and just to reiterate, the council had a really good discussion, you know, a lot of broad-based topics. When typically, our practice has been is get down to a measurable goal. You know, because if you do something that says improve public safety, unless you have something to back that up, you don't know if you're actually really doing anything or not. So, our approach has always been to get down to defined objects. At the end of the year, you can say, did we do it, or did we not, or is it in progress? And so, the, the core four goals that came out were a determined approach to City Hall upgrade. Then the second was determined path through a UGB expansion. The third is determine and prioritize stormwater, sidewalk, and transportation projects. Then the fourth was assess economic development capacities. And a couple of other ones that came up that I just wanted to note, how do you want to define those, is we had emphasize citizen community engagement. That's more of a broader, kind of an ongoing, it's not as definable. So, I wonder if you wanted that with the four? And then the second one, probably even more so, was implement new council operating procedures. That's even a little more internally kind of focused. So, there'd be a question whether you wanted that. It's your choice and where you put them. I would argue that the top four is the check yes, no. The bottom two are a little bit harder to keep. So, what you could do is have the four as really the core goals, and those could be noted, you know, kind of like as an emphasis or a, a practice for the year or something. We can always, we did that last time. We just kind of left that. But that could just be, you know, regular font, italic, something, just to note that. But, and we also can keep track in those areas, because we had discussions too, is, you know, if we're doing citizen engagement, if we're experimenting with new things, we can keep track of what we're doing there. The main thing with those, there's not really a, so it just depends on how you want to approach it. So, you could either have all six as a goal, just the four, or you could have just the four, and then do a kind of like a little different emphasis on the two.
And we've gotten these materials prior to the last meeting, so hopefully, everybody's had a chance to really review them. And it's, it's great. There's extensive notes about things that aren't even really related to this. It's a lot about how we decided to work as a group, but also some of the plans and long-term hopes for the city from years ago, and how those integrate now. So, I'd welcome a discussion, either sort of about the specific format we're talking about here, or in general about these items. Roxanne and Chris.
Why, just since, it seems like it was forever ago that we actually had the, the goal setting. However, there was a long conversation about what is a goal, what is a task. And one of the things that I remember was a concern of mine, was citizen and community engagement. And while this says emphasize citizen community engagement, my recollection was, what I had said was, I want to develop a community engagement policy process, something along those lines. So, that was very definitive as a task. Now, if anybody else agreed with me, I honestly don't remember. However, I, I don't want that to just kind of drop off, because to me, in fact, that's something that I ran on when I ran for this seat, was that we needed a community engagement policy or process. We need a way to make sure that we're having open, honest, transparent, regular, consistent dialogue. So, thank you.
Chris?
I thank you for those comments, Roxanne, and I, I, you know, definitely, definitely see exactly what you were saying. I would like to point out that emphasize citizen engagement and communication was one of the 2018-19 goals. So, this would be one that would be carried over into, into the new list of goals, similar to a number of the other goals that were, that were listed as more, you know, more binary, more yes, we did it, no, we didn't. I would also like to, like to highlight a discussion that took place during this, during this goal-setting session, about what, what is a goal? And we did elect as a group, if I recall correctly, to maintain some of these goals that were still under development. But that, at least my, my memory states that, you know, there was a lot of thought about, well, should a goal be something that you can just check off? And when I set my own personal goals, if I say I want to exercise more, eat a little healthier, I don't exercise once and then check that off. It's, it's an ongoing process. And I think that these goals should be the things that are overarching, things that set the tenor and, of our current city and the future direction of it, as opposed to just something that we can, you know, select because it's an easy metric. Now, I'm not advocating that we remove any of the goals that we, we collectively spoke on, but what I am advocating for is that we certainly keep the citizen and community engagement goal as a core tenet of how this council would like to move forward into the new year.
Thank you. I think core tenants is a maybe good way to describe it, right? That that's sort of council operating procedures, maybe even as a subset of our emphasis on community engagement, that, that how we operate with each other, how we operate with staff, and how we operate with citizens, really is a core tenet of making sure that we're moving towards bigger overarching goals, that we are, again, we haven't set as goals, because we really wanted to focus on these. And you'll notice several of those are, or all of them, were still up there. And we did that sort of purposefully and said, we don't want to start a whole new set of projects. We, our project is really rethinking how we communicate, how we get folks involved in things, and keep these things on track, because we are setting ourselves up for future growth, looking at the UGB expansion, the stormwater, and talking about our economic development or economic opportunity capacities. And so, I think that's, again, maybe not ideal here, and we need more detail. We agreed we'd be fleshing that out to get some better sense of how we can say we're moving forward on these.
Adam, Mayor, if I could. There's so many formats you can use in this area. And just to get to that, what, what some organizations do for, like, for cities, is there's a statement of values. And then there'll be typically proactively maintain infrastructure, provide effective customer service. Then those are the ones that are there. Then this gets down to what do we need to, to do? And a lot of times, you'll obviously tie those back. If you have a broad maintain infrastructure, then if you have an infrastructure project for that year, then that supports, you know, that goal. So, that could be something potentially, if you're interested, you could, you know, stand alone or integrate those next year during your process, if, if you want to take that to a different level.
And I think one of the ways I had sort of talked to each of you about that was potentially getting another session, once we get through budget and everything, particularly with our, our staff, our department heads, and our boards and commissions, because they have their own sets of plans and goals that they're working towards. And I bet if we put them all up on sticky notes around the room, we'd come up with some overarching values, or things that we think we're working towards by each of the work that we're doing. And so, I'm still kind of got that process in mind, and a way that we can accomplish that. So, other thoughts or comments?
One of the thing, one of the things that we've, that we've done in previous goal-setting deals, if we, we had a, a unmanageable group, we've identified, and I can't come up with a name. Darren, you might remember, focus or something like that, 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 that we would emphasize. One of the things we wanted to do is, every decision that we made, we wanted to consider what the economic impact, positively or negative, would be. And I don't recall whether we called that a focus or not, and it wasn't magical what we called it. But the idea was that we would overlay that over all decisions that we made. And as I look at these, and frankly, I can go either way, but, but emphasize community and engagement and communication, if that's a focus, that is embedded in every one of the four prior.
Sure.
Implement new council operating procedures. We could substitute new for, you know, efficient. I mean, that could be something that is ongoing and, and would not have a, you know, an end point along the way. And if we could, because I'm, you know, I'm, I, I think we're all in, in concurrence, that we would like to make sure that we maintain and enhance our citizen involvement. And if we could, and, and I guess if we just left it as an individual goal number five, it might be just goal number five. But if it's a focus on everything that we, we're going to talk about, because all those are going to require collaboration.
Right.
And all of those are going to require community input. And we all need to be working on better operating procedures. So, so that's just a, another thought of how we've done it in previous years.
Yeah, I, I think what we're getting to, semantically, is the term aspirational. There are things that we aspire to as a, as a council, as a community. And it's things like, I've talked about transparency. And you're, you're correct, Counselor Carey, all of these things. If we're aspiring to do this, all of these, we will need, we will need to then involve the community and make sure we have engagement. And so, I would, I would agree with you that it, it, it could simply become number five because it, it appears as a task. But if all of us know that every decision we make, we look at it through the lens of aspiring to be more transparent and more engaged, then I think that's a really good way to look at this. And yes, go back in July or August and, and look at it again. There's nothing that says we only do this yearly, that's it. And then we check off at the end of the year what we've done. So, thank you for that.
Chris, and then Laurel.
I, I have a question, and this is perhaps best, best directed to, to, to Mr. McClure. Why, why do we set these goals and put them up on the wall here in this room?
I think the idea is let the community know what our key projects are, you know, where our main things. I think everybody's probably aware that we, we're going to mow grass in the parks, we're going to get your utility bill out. But these are the, the big things that we're doing to kind of drive the community forward.
And I, I have, I have read the, the charter, but does it speak to this goal-setting in, in our charter anywhere, or this is just something that we do
The practice of the council, yeah.
As a, as a historical practice?
Yeah. And, and just to emphasize, I mean, you guys could not have a goal-setting session at all. You could never set a goal. You could either say, we hope everything's okay, or, or please do some good goals and get them done this year. But in this case, this, this is marching orders for us.
Gotcha.
And I think another point, too, when Counselor Carey and I joined council this, at the same time, I remember goal-setting seemed a little closer to the July start of the year, because these are fiscal year goals. And goal-setting was set a little later in the year, and then we said, well, wait a minute, wouldn't that impact budget? If we set some goals here, and those things aren't budgeted for, then the budget's already in process. So, that goal-setting, that's why we set, moved it back towards January or February, I recall. And that could, right? If, again, these have been ongoing, and now we see it may take another year to get to them, we don't want to drop them off the list. But that's, this is impacting our budgeting decisions, too.
So, to, to continue for, for a brief moment, if I may, it's my understanding that these goals are both things that are tracked by, by the council and by staff, as well as things that are used to, to guide us in our decisions and our priorities going forth. I've seen them referenced in this room before, and it's, it's a clear reminder of, of what we set out to do. And within, within that, I would almost say that, you know, some of these things that, you know, are slightly harder to define, and whether we call them goals later, or whether we call them something else later,
That would be so.
Are, are the most important things to have up on the wall as reminders of where we're going. When looking at, when looking at the, the approach toward, trying to go toward the Moda grant, and trying to write a proposal for that, there was discussion on, you know, well, where do, where do accessible parks fit into, you know, fit into the direction that we're going? And well, I got to tell you, I think that that discussion would have modulated much differently had something like that been included on had something like that been included on the goals on the wall. And so because of those things that I see, I see how this impacts how we act, I still feel that it is incredibly important to include, include these, especially the community engagement portion, given that it's not only something we've spoken about this goal-setting session to great length, but also something that previous councils have deemed incredibly important. And I'd like to continue seeing that through.
In my field, which is public health, when you achieve a goal, there's nothing left to be done. For example, polio will be eradicated from the face of the earth. In the, in the year 2020, there will be no farm-related occupational fatalities in Oregon. Those are goals. And then beneath all of those are the objectives. That is how you're going to reach that goal, tasks that you will undertake to achieve those objectives. What I see here on the, on the page are those objectives and tasks. A goal for City Hall would be Monmouth will have a City Hall that meets all current building and fire safety codes. That's our goal. So then if we're going to figure out how to do that, then under that, we have an approach to how we're going to do that. But determining an approach to City Hall upgrade is not a, is not a goal. Also, citizen and community engagement, a goal for that would be Monmouth is a self-governing city. They, and then the objectives under that are the, we had to get a better, bigger council chambers because so many people want to come and participate. So I'm sorry, but in my eyes, as I've always engaged in the kind of work that I do, these are not goals.
Thank you for that comment. And I think we've all kind of mentioned that. We're not exactly comfortable with that either, except I think we decided at the retreat to kind of go forward with this and then really have a deeper conversation because we need to get, again, budgeting and staff going. And I agree, I think it'd be great if we do have some more sessions later in the year to reword things in that fashion. I agree with you. This is, there can be a lot fewer ways to look at these things and the importance of them, so. But we kind of chose to go with this, stick with this, and have bigger conversations later was, I think, where we came to this point. And so if we're going to adopt these as-is, we would need to do that and get moving on with the rest of our agenda. The other option, if that's still not comfortable, is to take it back to another work session or something. So I will entertain the pleasure of a motion here.
I'd move approval of the 2019-20 goals as presented.
Second?
So the motion is to accept all six of those bullet points as presented. And is there any discussion about that? Let's go ahead and see what happens then. All in favor of adopting a six-bullet-point set of 2019-2020 goals for the council and our staff? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
I will abstain.
Okay. We'll go with that. So the new poster can get made up and we'll be improving our process in the future, so thank you. We do have these first readings, and so we're going to, we'll test this out and see if we can get through a couple of these and get some additional input, so. Our first one that we are going to talk about is the ordinance to adopt Legislative Amendment 1901, Short Term Vacation Rentals and Street Trees. And we'll have our staff report from our community development director, Suzanne Duffner, and see if we have any. We do have one public comment on this, so we'll go ahead and hear your staff report, see if we have additional questions, and then...
Sounds great. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name again is Suzanne Duffner, Community Development Director at the city of Monmouth. I had presented a staff report at the last meeting where we had a public hearing for Legislative Amendment 1901. But I'm just going to kind of touch on a few of the items in there just to, I know there were some people that weren't at that meeting and some people that have comments expressed since then. So bear with me as I just kind of review a couple of the concerns that have come up. Legislative Amendment 1901 addressed three items. Short-term vacation rentals, also known as the Airbnb vacation rental by owners. It also addressed accessory dwelling units and our list of approved street trees. So at the last meeting in March, the council gave direction to staff to prepare draft ordinances, but to prepare those as two separate items to vote on. So we had the short-term vacation rentals and the street tree list amendments in one ordinance, and then the second ordinance being the accessory dwelling unit, so we could talk about those things a little bit in two separate items. So with regards to this first one, this first ordinance deals specifically with the short-term vacation rentals and modifying the list of approved street trees. Some of the concerns that have been brought to my attention since that March 19th public hearing on this item includes some of the comments about the duration of short-term vacation rentals. So I just want to comment a little bit on, on how the ordinance is currently drafted. And if, you know, if there are issues that need further clarification, we can always address those. Nothing's been finalized yet, so. One of the comments that I'd heard was that this ordinance as drafted would limit property owners to just doing a vacation rental for 30 nights or less in a calendar year. That's not true. The, there is actually a separate process to go through. If it's 30 nights or less in a calendar year, then it's just a staff-level review of a registration permit. Very simple. We anticipated a small application fee of like $25, a one-time fee for that address. If the vacation rental occurs for more than 30 days in a calendar year, so more of a longer ongoing basis, we felt at the planning commission that those had potential for larger impacts to the neighborhoods. We want to evaluate those differently. So those would go through what's called a conditional use permit process, where we do notify the neighbors and there's a public hearing, and there could be conditions attached specific to that review, so. So just wanted to clarify that this ordinance does not, as written, limit it to just 30 nights a year. It's just establishing two different review procedures for 30 nights or less, or 31 nights or more. The other item is just that our code currently does not allow short-term vacation rentals. Our code allows bed and breakfast facilities where the owner stays there, provides a breakfast service, but they have to go through a conditional use process. And this is specific to residential areas. So it came to our attention that, that there were some residents using their homes for Airbnb. And the intent of these code changes is to establish a legal path forward so that folks could use their, their home under certain circumstances and make that a legal use. But also establishing some standards that would make sure that what's considered more of a commercial use of a lodging, a short-term lodging accommodation is compatible with, with the neighborhood. So we haven't took, taken a heavy hand on code enforcement. You know, we know that they're going on, but as they're becoming more popular, we're trying to get ahead of that curve a little bit and make sure that, that there's a legal fair playing ground for balancing the needs for some short-term vacation rental lodging because we have limited lodging available and people are attracted to our area, especially with the university. And with tourism, usually comes economic development dollars. So we want to encourage that. But at the same time, we've heard concerns from neighbors and residents that they don't want a Lincoln City or a Bend where their whole neighborhood turns into vacation rentals and there's not, like, permanent residents that live there. And that's kind of an extreme case. It's hard to imagine, you know, Monmouth becoming the Lincoln City of the Willamette Valley. But, you know, the same concerns about noise, parking, trash. And then the other common concern is, is it taking away from our affordable housing stock or our housing stock in general? If folks just use the home for a short-term rental, then it's not potentially available for, for longer-term renters. So there's, there's that concern as well. And these are not just concerns that are specific to Monmouth. Cities are grappling with this all across Oregon right now. So the fortunate part about this process is I think it's almost been a year that the planning commission's been holding work sessions to review it. We've had a lot of good examples or other cities to look to, to see kind of how they're setting their standards. And there's a big range. There's a lot of policy choice on discretion on how you want to set those, all the way from not allowing them, some cities don't want to allow them, to only allowing, like, a room of a house to be rented out where the homeowner has to be there essentially and, you know, check in the guests so that, that is, they're not renting out the entire house. So this ordinance as drafted would actually allow the entire home to be rented out, but that's a distinction that we did look at. The city of Astoria is an example of one where you can only do a homestay. You can't rent out the whole house. The owner has to be there, and then you're renting out essentially a room. So it kind of gets at that issue of the affordable housing stock and not taking housing potentially out of, out of the permanent housing stock. And then just lastly, there was some comments about, you know, is this not allowing me to rent a room to, like, a Western student or somebody on a more permanent basis? And this doesn't impact that at all. This is specifically talking about short-term stays defined as 30 days or less. So I just want to kind of clear up a few of those items. You've got the ordinance first reading before you this evening. We can, you could decide to move forward with that or if you feel like it needs further review, we could schedule a work session, which you know some further direction on what specific items to take a look at further. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Suzanne, thank you for all this, all your work on this. So let's say I own a home and I want to, you know, offer, I'm an empty nester and I have a couple extra rooms and I want to make some, generate some revenue on the side. And I end up in that situation where, you know, I've got, you know, it is defined as a transient, you know, transient occupants coming in there less than 30 days, et cetera, et cetera. But I, but my use exceeds the 30-day minimum. Let's say in a given year, I end up renting it at, for 85 days. What, what would I, as a homeowner, be obligated to do? What are the steps that I would have to take once I hit that magic number of 30?
Yeah, great, great question. So the track that you're on, then, if you're trying to rent it out more than 30 days, is the conditional use permit track? And so that has an application form that goes along with it. We have a public hearing. It's the planning commission that'll make a final decision on that. And they're looking at whether or not that use is compatible and consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And then neighbors have an opportunity to comment on it. The, the vacation rental would still be subject to the same standards as the ones that are the 30 days or less. So you still have to provide the parking, the trash service, a local contact person. But it, when you're going through the conditional review process, there could be some additional conditions that may get placed on it. There may be a privacy screening hedge that, you know, neighbors like, we'd like a little more privacy here or could limit the number of rooms or require an extra parking space or... But it's really just to kind of evaluate, I think, whether or not there's going to be, you know, any more impact since it's being rented out on a more continuous basis.
So would you say that there are, in other, in other kind of land use votes we have, there's sort of things, as long as this, the new thing checks these boxes, we don't really have much of a choice but to approve the said new use?
Right, there's not nearly as...
Would it be along those lines, you know, when it comes to the...
Right, yeah. I mean, you know, if you can meet the standards, then it's, then it's a pretty much yes, you know, recommend approval on it. It's not quite as much discretion as, say, like a variance where you have to serve some kind of hardship to get those approved, so. Yeah, yeah, but, but it, yeah, it still has a little more discretion than, say, the staff level review.
Thank you.
I had one question, quick question about that variance process there. It mentions in here, so that is a larger fee, an additional fee.
It is, good.
But that, again, is a one-time fee.
Correct. As long as it's at that address, yes.
By that owner, and it mentions if the property transfers, then it would have to go through the process all over again for the new owners.
Right, so we have the new contact information.
Thank you.
If I may, the conditional use process, this just references the conditional use process. It's already in the code. And so it establishes the criteria for conditional use.
Yes. One thing that surprised me is the number of people over the last two weeks who've told me that they rent out a room or two in their home as an Airbnb in order to pay their mortgage. And they said, boy, you know, if we can't, if we can't rent out our place for a couple of weekends each month, we're not going to be able to afford to live in Monmouth. Have you heard anything like that?
I haven't. I had the opportunity to do some research online through the main platforms where people rent their homes out, to my understanding, or homestay, Airbnb, and vacation rental by owner. And at least from what I was able to gather for typing in, you know, city of Monmouth, I came up with about nine active listings. Two of those were for, or three of them were for renting the whole house, making the whole house available. Five were for private rooms. And one was actually a campsite in somebody's backyard. It's kind of weird, but I thought, might have been leftover from the eclipse.
Yeah, definitely. Take it down.
Yeah, so I had not heard that people were using this as a way to, I mean, that's kind of part of the sharing economy, right? Is that you use your largest asset, your home, to help generate some additional income. But, you know, that, that's, at least it's not something that has been brought to my attention yet at this point.
I know in the, in the 19th and 20th centuries, a lot of times when a woman was widowed, she would rent out rooms in her house to try to get by.
Yeah, I've heard of that, where it's more of a permanent renter because you can have five or fewer unrelated people live in your home, right?
That's not subject to...
But that's not this. Those are long-term, yeah, yeah.
As landlord and tenant, yeah.
Okay, Chris?
How are, how are these things calculated if there is a mix between longer-term and short-term rentals at the same property? And I'll give you an example. If someone rents normally for three-month periods at a time, but then occasionally in between those times will rent, you know, for a weekend here and there, that's, might still just be, you know, five different, five different rentals of that room in the year, but it certainly sums up quite a bit more than that total of 30 nights. How is that handled in here? I couldn't find anything in the language that, that deals with that scenario.
So we've defined the short-term stays as somebody that is staying 30 days or less. So in the case where they were staying longer than that, 60, 90 days, those, they don't, they're not subject to our transit occupancy tags. They're not subject to this ordinance per se. So, but if the owner is still, you know, mixing it up and doing some of the shorter-term stays, you know, somebody's staying over a weekend or a week, then they would still need this permit to be able to do those days.
And as a follow-up, that, that amount of time, you know, it's, it's more about the, the time, the times allotted as opposed to the platform that these renters are found on, correct?
Correct, yes.
Other questions, Roxanne?
Are there advantages to the city at this point as far as Airbnb? Do we become official in some way? Does the city actually start getting some of the funds that Airbnb takes when somebody rents a place?
We're supposed to, even without this ordinance.
That's what I, that's what I was...
Even without this ordinance, we're supposed to.
I knew we were supposed to, but my understanding was we were not getting, from these nine residents in the campsite.
From Airbnb, we're not. This ordinance imposes the obligation jointly on the intermediary, which is Airbnb, but also on the owner. So we'd have somebody to...
An Airbnb owner told me that they pay tax.
Yes, they pay the tax, but it magically goes someplace not here, so that's what I wondered.
The legislature is chasing the intermediaries, yeah, that's above our...
It's a sharing economy. Please share with us.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, this is not unique to us, so.
All right, and additional questions, John?
Could an airstream be put on a vacant lot?
Could an airstream be put on a vacant lot and run it out?
Under our transit occupancy tax, RVs count as if somebody is staying there, they would, and somebody's charging them to stay there, then yeah, they would, they would be subject to that. That's something you might want to make a little more explicit in this ordinance if you're trying to prohibit that. I think our current regulations on RVs are, is it 14 days? 14 days or less, so.
Well, I got, I got somehow solicited, you know, and so I said, you know, stay in an airstream. So, okay, Airbnb arrangement. I got a little cover over the top, you know, a little driveway pull up there. Room for a barbecue underneath. I thought, wait a minute, that's not what I had. I didn't think we were talking about that here. And I'm not interested in talking about that here. You know, personally, I'm, you know, I'm generally supportive of this, this whole enterprise here. But I do have heartburn if we get into, because Cousin Eddie, if you'll recall, rolled one in and that would be a low rent, but it would be permissible for 30 nights a week, a month, or a year.
No, didn't you just say it was only 14 nights?
Well, but if it's defined as this.
Right.
Yeah.
Are they dwelling units?
So it does, yeah.
It says dwelling unit.
It says dwelling unit, but then our TOT actually includes RVs in the, like what you're renting out.
Yeah, so this may be apples and oranges.
Okay.
But I think the ordinance is written to just dwelling units and not recreational vehicles.
This just deals with dwelling units.
Yeah, so.
RVs fall under the separate, RVs already fall under, and trailer would already fall under the separate code, which is 14 nights?
Rates, with permission.
We're not authorizing single RV trailer parks with this.
Well, and is there, is that, I mean, how is that not a dwelling unit?
By definition.
Foundation, it's not a foundation.
Yeah, it's a vehicle or it's a trailer.
It's a vehicle.
It's not a dwelling.
Take the wheels off.
No, dwelling unit, no, dwelling unit has a definition in the, in the code that does not include trailers and RVs.
Well, we add language.
Letter or perhaps it's titled something else?
I don't know what that's.
There was a letter from Ellen Osborne about six or eight months ago that was brought to the Planning Commission as raids. So unless there's a new letter that I'm not aware of, we did. And I've been copying Ms. Osborne on all of the meetings and the agendas so that she was aware of the, of the issue. So, yeah, I apologize. I didn't know that there was, if there was another letter. But she was, if I recall correctly, it's been a number of months, but she's in support of the city allowing short-term vacation rentals. That's actually one of the properties that brought it to our attention from a, from a concerned neighbor. So, yeah.
There was a, a letter that came in with no identification of who the sender was. It was just an email address. Oh, yes, it is. It says it's from Bonnie Ross.
And that was just information for us.
Okay, so here it is if you want to read it.
Oh, I have this.
You've read that one, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I just, I'm just curious as to the dollar amount that was said, how, how that was determined? And I, and I saw it said between 500 and 700. How did, how did we come up with that?
Yeah, so $700 is the application fee for a conditional use permit. And our application fees are an estimate of how much it costs to process the application. Actually, I haven't changed those for probably over 10 years. So it may be actually under, believe it or not, you know, it's hard to imagine. But we do have to give mail notice to property owners within 250 feet. So there's a staff report and issuing the decision. And so that's what the expense to the city is trying to recoup, you know, a portion of that cost.
Those filing fees are set by council, yeah. And that applies to all conditional use applications.
And again, that's a one-time fee.
Right, I just, I just didn't know where that originated from.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not a revenue generating. This is just to cover the cost, break an even, maybe.
Probably not breaking.
Probably not.
Doesn't even do that.
Yeah.
A quick question. If someone applies for a bed and breakfast through a conditional use permit, do they have to have inspections by the fire marshal and the health department?
We notify, the city notifies the fire department of any new land use applications. And then they have an opportunity to comment and put conditions on that. And so if they request as a condition that they can be notified for inspection, then we would put that on there. Some cities like Salem that have more capacity and a city, state or city fire marshal, they, they are more stringent on those requirements. They're able to get out because they have the capacity and do more of the inspections. But at least the smaller city examples that we looked at just didn't have that as a specific requirement, simply because of the staffing constraints.
Do you know, are there fees for those inspections?
Depends on the fire district or who is doing that.
I mean, if you've got cockroaches in your kitchen cupboards, you're not going to allow them to rent out their house, probably.
Yeah, I don't think, so our health department is through Polk County and, yeah, I don't think they have anything.
There's a fee for the inspection?
I don't think Polk County.
There is, if you have a license. The school district, we have a health license and we actually pay for our annual inspection. But we have a license. If homeowners don't get a license or if a B and B serves unlicensed, which I don't think they do, but if they have a license.
Yeah, sorry, I was making the connection of the B and Bs. Yes, I believe there's a health, because they're preparing food for public consumption. So, yeah, they would be licensed through Polk County for that, yeah.
So if they pass the conditional use and get the conditional use permit, then they become a bed and breakfast and not a, like an Airbnb house?
Yeah, if that's the application.
I mean, there is a distinction, right. It depends on what they're asking for. Some, like Monmouth operates as both. They are both a bed and breakfast and they do, they can rent out the whole house. They're also in a commercial zone, but, but yeah, so it depends on what the ask is there.
Okay, so there is quite a hurdle to jump through if you want, if you want to rent out a room in your house for more than 30 days in a calendar year. You've got some pretty serious hurdles you have to jump through.
Only if you want to be serving food, that's what you're getting to.
I mean, you have to go, you have to apply for the conditional use permit. You've got to go to the Planning Commission. Your neighbors have to be notified and they have to have a right to comment and so all of these things.
It's a higher review than for 30 days or less.
If you're doing that as transient lodging, right? If you rent out a room to a college student every year and that basically that student is there as a renter and you're a landlord, then there's no permit process.
This is just short stays.
Yes.
Transient lodging is specifically defined in our code.
Just to, to address John's question, dwelling unit is a defined term in the zoning code and this is being, this is incorporated in the zoning code, so it applies. It means one or more habitable rooms occupied or intended to be designed to be occupied by one family, having facilities for living, sleeping, cooking and eating. Does not include hotel, motel, boarding house, campground or mobile home. Mobile home is defined as a, designed to be transported on the highway. And we have a separate definition entirely for recreational vehicle. And this, this code section, this new code section does not pick up recreational vehicles within the bed and breakfast, or I'm sorry, the Airbnb short-term vacation rental system. So it all works with the definitions that are already in place that this just plugs into, right?
I, yes.
I'm sorry. Suzanne, earlier you were mentioning, you know, it comes before the Planning Commission and they may have additional requirements that aren't, does that mean additional requirements that aren't already in the short stay? And what, what might be an example of that or something that comes to mind? Say, what I'd hate, what I'd hate to happen is just sort of these arbitrary requirements that come out of nowhere.
Are they written somewhere?
Right, so the, the vacation rental standards are drafted, that are in there. They would definitely be subject to those. And then through a conditional use process, as the name implies, there's ability to condition, the city could put, has, has a potential, doesn't have to, but could put additional reasonable conditions. I guess how you define reasonable can be debated. But generally what we're looking at there, like if a neighbor complains about a privacy issue, well, my window is looking out right next to their patio. Could you put up a hedge so that I don't have to see their fire at night or something? You know, so, so privacy issues, if they're building a separate structure that could be rented out, maybe, you know, setting it back further. So, you know, I can't say that there would not be any new, you know, requirements placed on it through the conditional use, but they have to be reasonable.
Right, and they have to be, yeah, they can't be arbitrary, that, and that's all part of the land use law. They do have to be based on the facts and circumstances of the application.
Yeah, my, my concern is that, you know, somebody who's meeting all of these requirements, you know, and they're going to shell out the 500 bucks or the 700 bucks or whatever it is, that they can be reasonably assured that they're going to be able to do this.
They're going to be approved.
Right, that's, that's really my concern.
Yeah, I think we're all kind of in favor of encouraging this type of activity in our community and.
Again, the idea is making sure that the neighbors know that this is happening and that there's not going to be further issues down the road with, well, I had no idea they were going to have people over on Saturday night, so.
All right, I am going to declare this the first reading of an ordinance adopting amendments to Title V of the Monmouth City Code and Title 18 of the Monmouth Zoning and Development Ordinance relating to short-term vacation rentals and street trees. This is Legislative Amendment 1901. And that will come back to us for a second reading and adoption. Now, we pulled out of Legislative Amendment 1901 as forwarded to us by the Planning Commission after their public process, an ordinance to adopt new language regarding accessory dwelling units. And so Suzanne?
Yeah, okay. So this particular ordinance would just be to adopt the changes to our accessory dwelling unit standards. Just by way of background information, we did, there was a public hearing before the council on March 19th, which we received no testimony for against this issue. This particular change came about as a result of the state legislature passing Senate Bill 1051 that requires cities to allow accessory dwelling units wherever single-family detached dwellings are allowed. And that the cities could only adopt reasonable local regulations for accessory dwelling units related to siting and design of those. As a result of that new legislation, the Department of Land Conservation Development, DLCD, came out with guidance on like a model code for cities to consider when amending their codes to be in compliance with the Senate bill. And one of the recommendations was to remove owner occupancy requirements for the accessory dwelling units or the main, primary dwelling unit on the property. So that language has been, and the current draft struck through because Monmouth currently has an owner occupancy requirement for either the accessory dwelling or the main building. And some of the reasoning behind removing that requirement is that it could potentially serve as a barrier to property owners that may want to construct an accessory dwelling unit. And then the other concern is just how do you enforce that? And is it creating kind of ongoing code enforcement issue of trying to monitor and check to make sure that that's standards being met? So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
In, in the, the questions regarding enforcement, we have a lot of things currently that are, you know, not, not actively enforced. It's my understanding that the way that the, the law, the code reads right now, that that would only be enforced under a complaint-driven basis? Is, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that's our current policies.
It's policy, the code is, that's not in the code.
Or not?
Because we could initiate an enforcement action, yeah. That's practice, it's not in the code.
But, but through practice, even though there is, there is a, an enforcement issue here with how practical it is to enforce it, right now through policy, it's only really being enforced, it's only really being enforced on a complaint basis, like many other things. Is that correct?
Yeah, and just an example, let's make an easy one, is that somebody has their main home, they've got an accessory dwelling unit, they live in the house, they rent out the small one, they sell the house. We don't know that. There's no way to keep track of that. So, yeah, we're not going to know anything unless somebody was aware that there was a rule that you had to be occupied and then they called us and said, hey, there's an issue. That's a tough thing with city codes in general. Their standards, they're there when you need them. I could say any 24 hours a day, there's somebody violating something in our city code.
But, but the way that it's written right now, it is there to be able to protect people in case, you know, there is an issue that arises.
Yeah, it's like noise ordinances, you know, we've got lots of things that we don't quite pick up. But then if there is a problem, then we have a code to go to that we can actually enforce.
Gotcha, thank you.
How many, oh, did somebody?
Go ahead.
I just have a quick question. Do we know how many of these little accessory building units exist right now?
I have no idea. They're becoming a little more popular now that people are finding out about them and aging parents, so people wanting to have a place for folks to stay. But, yeah, unfortunately, I don't, I don't have a good sense of a number for you to give me on that.
And Counselor Schinkel?
The, the example you provided, aging parents, you know, mom or dad passed away and I want, you know, the other, the surviving parent to come live with me. And that's not really what we're talking about here, right? What we're talking about is, is renting this to anyone, right? So, you know, when I hear, when I hear this, that this requirement to have the landlord or the person who's going to create this accessory dwelling, when I hear that, that this requirement discourages people, the only person that discourages someone is a landlord who doesn't live there, is someone who uses that purely as a rental, right? Okay, so then my second question would be Elaine, there's no requirement specifically that we strike this from our code, correct?
This is an interpretation by DLCD of statute, but it is, it is only guidance.
So what, what's the risk if we decide we like the requirement? This is how Monmouth wants to roll?
Yeah, the risk is somebody applies and gets denied and challenges our ordinance as being in violation of statute and we find out then whether it is or isn't? Yeah, that's your, that's your risk.
And, and the violation would be that it's two owners?
Yes, that's right. That we're, you know, they, they would point to the DLCD rule and maybe not as being black letter law, but being a representative of a standard that a state agency with responsibility for this on a statewide basis has determined. And they would ask a court to adopt that as, as basically a, in fact, a rule of reasonableness that we're violating.
But besides your perfectly and wonderfully reasonable rates, the only thing that we would be risking is an injunction.
That's right, telling you to change, change your ordinance, that's right. It's, 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 the, the risk is, is law.
Okay, thank you.
Roxanne?
Well, I, I do see a risk on the other side of this is that if I'm an upstanding citizen and I, and I want to do this, but I own the home and I have this accessory dwelling, but I'm not going to live in either. And now it's just, this has barred me from doing that because I'm trying to be a good citizen and follow, follow the ordinance and follow the law. Because we've, we've said that, nope, I've got to live in the main house to rent out the one in the back. So to the point of, that's why DLCD, is that right?
That's right.
That's why they said, take this out because there will be people that want to follow the law, that want to do the right thing, but then can't do it because they're not going to live in the main house. So, I mean, to me, as I've, I've rented homes before, I've been a landlord. I certainly kept tabs on the property. I mean, I wasn't just absentee, I mean, I lived in another city. But I certainly made sure that my, my tenants were doing everything that I would have encouraged them to do had I been living right next door.
Yeah, you've defined the policy issues well.
I'm sorry?
You've defined the policy issue well, yeah, between the two of you.
John?
Well, well, current, current code requires, allows for an accessory dwelling unit. you know, to be utilized, uh, a- a- and it is simply, as it is right now, that person is, is required to live there. So it's not like it's, we're, we would not be, we would be opening the opportunity, it would become much more permissive this way. And, and, you know, my concern is, 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 well, I've got a number of them. Um, chief among them is, is that we've got a, an, uh, you know, let's just take the worst-case scenario. You got an out-of-state property owner, uh, like we have a, a fair few of in this town, and they see this as an opportunity to drop down 400 square feet and, uh, you know, uptick on the rent. Uh, that's my concern. Um, a- and then that may be an, uh, uh, may be an anomaly. Well, l- l- let me get to my specific questions. Um, and again, I'm a little behind the curve on this because a lot of this was done in the Planning Commission before I began work, you know, working with that group. Um, and I missed a meeting that we had some of this discussion before, so pardon me if this is redundant, but i- if we're going to allow a 300 to 800 square feet is the size, and that excludes the related garage area, you're going to build a pretty good-sized garage and do a lot of storage in there, that could become a fairly good-sized, um, structure. So that, th- th- tha- tha- that all of a sudden now that fills that lot up pretty quickly, and then excluding the garage, and I know what that's going for, but, but that could be utilized to the, to the advantage certainly.
John?
Yeah.
To that point, we do have a lot coverage standard that you can't cover more than 45% of the lot with structures.
Okay, I did not see that.
That's, that exists separating.
Sorry, I didn't give that a whole chapter.
That would be helpful to have, that 45, okay, so 45%, so that would, that would provide.
Setback requirement, so I, I just.
Okay, yeah, see, a lot of these, a lot of these things, I didn't know, what's the setback, what's the height?
Sure, yes, yeah, we have those defined, yeah, my apologies, I, I was trying to keep it kind of a condensed version rather than the whole code section, but.
Because we're not changing those things.
Right, those are already.
I know, but those things are, are, you know, pretty significant, um, you know, like a single-story, I'm, uh, is it a single-story dwelling, or could you have a loft?
Well, it says an accessory dwelling unit shall be designed to maintain the appearance of the main building of the single-family residence.
The appearance, the trim.
Wow.
I, I mean, and, and you could have something that would be that, that way, but you've got a sleeping lot. I watch HGTV people, I know how they fit them in there.
However, it has to be approved, right, by the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
They're going to see, oh no, they're trying to build a little McMansion in the backyard.
Well, it's not approved by Planning Commission, I mean, it comes through their building permits, but, um, yeah, so, I mean, you can already do a two-story house, you know, so with the accessory dwelling unit standard, um, seven, I think it is, on page two, talks about, um, the accessory dwelling unit has to be in the same building as the pri- the principal residence, uh, unless it's a larger lot, and that's defined by 8,500 square feet, then you can detach it as a separate gar- you know, like a detached garage or a carriage house or something at that point. So, so it just would appear as it was part of the house if it's a smaller lot, to try to keep it in proportion and keeping it looking like a single-family dwelling neighborhood, so.
Can I just jump in?
Yes, please.
So, uh, uh, let me make sure I'm clear on this, if, if you have a 5,000-square-foot, single-family lot and you have a house on it, and you want to build a structure for your mother-in-law or grandma to come live in, it has to be attached to the main house?
Yeah, mhm.
Okay.
That's correct, we're not changing that, yeah.
And just one more quick question, and, and if it's a relative who's living there and they don't pay rent, does any of this apply?
Um, if it's, if it has its own separate kitchen, then yeah, it would be a separate unit.
Oh, even if they don't pay any rent, okay, okay, thank you.
So, so we have, so there are setbacks.
Lot coverage?
Maximum.
Maximum lot coverage. Uh, okay, that's good, talked about height restrictions. Single-story driveway, okay. You know, how, I, I don't have any sense of, of, um, what an 8,500-square-foot lot looks like. And I, I, I can think of some larger lots in town, but.
It's a pretty good-sized lot, I'd say most subdivisions, they're building 5,000 to 7,000 square-foot lots in a typical. Yeah, corner might get.
Would be less than.
Your corner lot would be less than.
Some of the older parts of town have some bigger, mhm, but the new subdivisions are more in that 5,000 to 7,000 square-foot range.
Sure.
Okay, I will go ahead and conduct the first reading, but I have a quick question about that because since this was broken off from the other one, this part also refers to Title V and Title 18, but it looks like this particular one only includes Title 18, so are we going to re-merge?
Yeah, we, we, we'll fix that for the second reading, we'll fix that for a second, we can adjust that on second reading.
Okay, so I will, uh, read an ordinance adopting amendments to Title V of the Monmouth City Code and Title 18 of the Monmouth Zoning and Development Ordinance relating to accessory dwelling units, also contained in Legislative Amendment 1901.
And what you will see next time will be stricken Title V.
Right. Thank you for that, and we do have some adoptions, these are items, uh, that should go fairly quickly, but we have, uh, we are at the two-hour mark, is when anyone like to take a quick break?
We can just. There's a cookie calling my name.
There is a cookie back there, and I need some water, uh, we'll move on. So, our first item, Mr. McClure, if you can.
Yeah, we had a presentation at the last council meeting on the sheriff's levy coming up, actually, public safety levy for Polk County, and main thing is they did in 2015, it expires in 2020, but they want to try to go a year early just in case they can plan better, get things transitioned if they need to do something, so. It's going to be on the May 19 ballot, so just coming right up, so if you would like to support that, we have a resolution to do so.
And.
It's a low-cost activity.
What would the number be on this one?
This is Resolution 1880 is our next resolution, if anyone would like to propose a motion.
Well, I move approval of Resolution 1880 endorsing and declaring support for Polk Public Safety Levy Measure 27-129.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion about putting our names to that endorsement? That would come out as the Monmouth City Council endorsing it, I'm just going to say, I have personally endorsed the measure, um, given them my signature and donated to that. I think, uh, in, in many ways, this has contributed greatly to our safety, their, their presentation shows that, and so again, it's, doesn't often mention the fact of the impact on juvenile justice, but, uh, this has had a significant impact on our ability to serve juveniles and, uh, prevent issues there, so.
Well, you know, I, I missed the, uh, the presentation, I've looked through the, the materials as scant as they were, and I didn't watch it on, on YouTube, so I, I probably should have. Um, was everyone satisfied that, that the, the dollar amount works with the, because a lot of that was, was, was initiated because of the lack of timber funding, of, of timber money. That money is flowing, albeit lower than it once was, but nonetheless, uh, that is getting there. I mean, I, I, it does, do all the numbers work, I, I guess? Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm fully in support of that, I, I, but I'm just curious as to whether or not.
Yeah.
I was going to say, at least what, my understanding when they were presenting was that they, they were reducing it slightly from what they did four years ago, uh, the, the maximum amount. They have not requested the maximum amount, and, uh, any timber harvest dollars that they get, they're reducing it, and that's one of the reasons it's been significantly less, and they had continued that, that thought process with this one as well.
And they, they have an accounting for that, I'm sure.
They actually, actually, the way these things work, you ask for authority to issue up to X, but if you don't need it, you don't have to go that high, and that is exactly, they're very, very, very aware of that, so. I would believe that of Commissioner Pope and Commissioner.
Sure, sure, yeah, I, I just, I'm just unfamiliar with.
No, you're exactly right, that's how the process works, you have to ask authority, you can't get more than that, but you can't get less, and they are hoping to keep it under that.
All right, if there are no additional questions or comments, um, we'll, uh, gauge a vote on this, all in favor of our, um.
Oh, Brett's roll call.
Oh, roll call, thank you. Ms. Bowman, that's correct, you all get to speak individually on this.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmar.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Belts.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
All right, thank you, we will forward that resolution and our endorsement on to that. Our next item is a resolution, um, number 1881, which we choose to go forth to install this crosswalk we heard about earlier, so Russ Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Coons and members of council, yes, what I have, uh, before you is a, a resolution to adopt a crosswalk on Stadium Drive North. Uh, the location is about 560 feet north of, of the intersection with Church Street. The request came in from a citizen who, who walks that area quite a bit, and, and, uh, so we took it to Traffic Safety, Traffic Safety, along with the university representatives, took a look at it, uh, saw it as a good, uh, uh, partnership in, in making that happen. Uh, so, um, basically, the, the, what we're going to do is the city will install them initially, and then the university will continue to, uh, maintain, uh, those particular crosswalks thereafter. It does create a nice spacing of crosswalks through that area on campus, so I'd be happy to answer any questions to clarify.
And in your report mentioned that's about $1,200 for that initial installation, and they will maintain it.
Okay.
Yes.
Why weren't sidewalks created along both sides of this, uh, of this street throughout the entirety? I, I walked this the other day and noticed that there are not sidewalks in areas where, um, where there's a parking lot, but there is, uh, you know, bark mulch and, uh, and what have you.
I, I honestly don't know all the, the details behind it, uh, but, uh, this stretch of roadway is unique in Monmouth in that what, what the roadway is, is an easement across university property that's different from most other roadways in town or in, within a, a public right-of-way. And so I think maybe what happened is when it was initially constructed, the university had a plan for what that might look like, and, and so it was, it was constructed in that fashion, and then at, at some point over time, the city has, uh, taken, um, responsibility of the roadway, uh, through and, through the establishment of an easement for it.
And then, when, when you say, um, install a crosswalk, we're literally just talking about paint on the ground?
Correct.
Okay, because right now, if you cross here, um, you, you end up dead-ending into, uh, into a curb with a fire hydrant and, um, and, uh, and, and a area of bark mulch. Um, this doesn't appear to be, and I'm all for a crosswalk, but this doesn't appear to be very ADA compliant or, um, or particularly safe, even if there was a crosswalk there, I'm not sure, I'm not, I mean, it would be safer, but I'm not sure how excited I would be to, to use it, I would still probably go diagonally across to where the other sidewalk begins.
Yeah, if, uh, yes, a- and that's a, that's a great observation, that's, that's part of the partnership that, uh, I honestly, I didn't want to outright commit the university to i- in this meeting, but the, the university does have plans to do sidewalk improvements over the summer, and, and the installation of a, of an approved ADA ramp on that side of the, the street is actually part of their, uh, discussion and, and, uh, commitment in the process.
Thank you, that makes me happy.
All right, so again, Resolution Number 1881, and this is the fun part, right? We get to like do streets and crosswalks, this is not, people say it's not glamorous.
Go safety.
They can't put in a crosswalk without us, so.
I move that the Monmouth City Council adopt Resolution Number 1881 approving the installation of a crosswalk on Stadium Drive North.
Second.
And roll call, please, Phyllis.
Counselor Sharmar.
Yes.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Belts.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Russ. And we have a couple that are, are second reading and adoption of items that we have thoroughly discussed. So these are considered ordinances, we are not resolving to do or commit something new, but actually creating the laws by which we operate in the city, so we have a couple of ordinances here. And Scott, our first one, quick reminder.
Yes, the first one's a drug paraphernalia ordinance update, and, uh, current standard is you can't have a device in public view anywhere. And it was to go at, like, convenience stores and other places that are really accessible to anybody. What the ordinance changes do here is it allows, say, a marijuana shop, where it's obviously just kind of part of the products and the sales, that's an over 21 facility, so you wouldn't have exposure to a minor. And if you had somebody that was designated as a smoke shop, which is a specific item, um, same thing, since you're a smoke shop, that seems logical to be able to show smoking devices. So what this would do, an update, kind of do a little carve-out, would keep the main standard in for like the convenience stores or other places, but then allow kind of the smoke shops and the marijuana stores to be able to operate in a more logical manner for them too.
So this ordinance would amend our city code, this would be considered ordinance number 1384. I'll accept a motion on that.
I move approval of second reading and adoption of ordinance 1384, amending Monmouth City Code regulating the display of drug paraphernalia and declare an emergency.
And a second?
Second.
And again, declaring an emergency means it takes effect immediately, it's not like the emergency we would normally think of, but it means we, we don't see the need for a waiting period on this issue because it's something that we can take care of right away. Any other questions or discussion on this? All in favor?
Roll call.
Nope, a roll call, sorry.
Counselor Belts.
Yes.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmar.
Yes.
All right, and ordinance 1384 is enacted, and that will take effect immediately. We have one last ordinance, and we get Suzanne again, this is also an item we've discussed and will be taking up as ordinance 1385.
Okay, great, so this is the second reading of the right-of-way vacation, um, case number 18-01, uh, the ordinance to adopt a street vacation for the property. Uh, it's an alleyway, an alleyway and an unused, um, street right-of-way that was formerly the, uh, railroad line between Monmouth and Independence. Um, the right-of-way vacation was needed, uh, to help facilitate the Ash Creek Station, the commercial development that's, uh, getting underway. And, uh, first reading was held in March, the public hearing was held back in January. Um, so this would be the, the, again, the ordinance to formally adopt that. I do need to point out that, um, when we originally drafted the ordinance, we had, um, earlier dates of February and March in there, so we'll need to amend those to be the correct dates, the first reading again was March 19th, and then, uh, second reading is, is April 2nd, so, uh, we'll get those corrected, but, uh, the recommendation from staff is to conduct the second reading.
Okay. So, street vacation, not the same as a short-term vacation. It's a vacation kind of night for us here, but this is us giving up our right to have a street there, basically. Um, and again, something we've previously discussed. And so I would entertain a motion for ordinance number 1385.
I move to adopt ordinance, um, 1830, uh, 1385, uh, an ordinance adopting right-of-way vacation, uh, 18-01.
Second.
We've done second night, any discussion or further questions or concerns about this? Roll call, please, Phyllis.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Belts.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmar.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
All right, so thank you very much for those, and we have a couple minutes here for council comments, and we, Roxanne.
Just a quick one, I just wanted to let council know that I joined Sean Irvine of Independence and several others in front of the legislature a couple weeks ago, well, two weeks ago, to testify in favor of House Bill 2541, which, if it is passed, it would help us with the first step of putting together a trolley, and that would be for the trolley feasibility study, so, hopefully, fingers crossed, that will move forward.
Any other comments?
I have a, a couple of things, I think, I received an email, and I think you probably all did as well, from a research organization at Stanford University, they're doing research on the mood of civility among government entities across the United States, and they had a link to click on to take the survey, and I wrote back and I said, "Not a chance, I'm not going to click on this link," so they wrote back to me and said that, said, "Your skepticism was very refreshing," and I, I work as a director of operations at Civic Pulse, and I'm always telling our director that our whole survey strategy would fall apart if government officials followed better cybersecurity principles. So I wrote back to him and I said, "I'll do it the 20th century way, if you want to send me this survey on paper, I'll fill it out with a pencil and mail it back to you," and I said, "As a matter of fact, send me seven and I'll pass them out to my fellow counselors and see if they want to take it as well." Also, our Rotary Club last week had a very interesting presentation by Gareth Hopkins, who's a new professor at Wu, a biology professor, talking about light pollution, and he, he pointed out some of the ways that artificial light at night can be very harmful to everything from the little creepy crawlies under the ground to human beings, breast tumors, for example, grow most quickly around midnight, and women who work night shifts and are exposed to artificial light have a greater risk of breast cancer, so there is an organization called Dark, the Dark Sky City Project, and several people have said to me, "Why don't we talk about doing that between our two communities, Independence and Monmouth, see if we can start some work on becoming a, a dark sky city?" And then also, while we're on the subject of the Rotary Club, our Monmouth Independence Rotary Club participates in the youth exchange program, we currently have a wonderful young man from Belgium who is staying with host families here in Monmouth, and he will be going back to, to Belgium in the, in the summer, and we will be greeting a young woman from Thailand who'll be coming to stay here and attend Central High School in the fall. Generally, the exchange students stay at host families for three months, three stays of three months, so we need three host families, and so I would like to ask everybody here to pass the word, if you have, I don't know if, it wouldn't be a short stay.
Not paid, they're not paid, it's okay.
If you have an extra room in your house that you're not renting out on Airbnb, perhaps you'd like to spend three months hosting a bright young woman from Thailand, pass the word to your neighbors as well, and also, it's been 276 days since we were first made aware of problems with sidewalks in this city and no action yet. Thank you.
Right, and I'll remind us, we will be going into an executive session later, and I think we'll do that after-work session, so I'll read the script at that point in time regarding how that works and who's allowed in that.
You've already read it.
I did, but just in case I have to reiterate it, I'm sure Phyllis was not to do this, yes.
If, if, one of the things that came up relative to the, to the Airbnb and the accessory dwellings and all of that, and one of the things that made that sort of confusing was that it was folded in with trees, and this sort of an omnibus ordinance is hard to get your, at least it's for me, it's hard to get my hand around, I understand and I perfectly appreciate the, the need for, you know, for brevity and expediency, but when we have issues that are disparate and perhaps going to generate a considerable amount of talk, it might be that we could split those out from the beginning, and if anybody else has that thought, I think we ought to, before we start directing anything, just have a discussion at a work session to see whether there's, you know, if we can figure some parameters, you know, for what might be something that we can lump together and things that we ought to separate out, and then the other thing that I'd like to comment on is, Chief, and you provided the annual report, and, which was a, a significant data dump, for sure, but the thing that, that, this would be more impactful, just from my own perspective, if there was some narrative that went with it, I found myself asking, you know, in 13 and 17, we were down officers, and in some cases, we, we didn't have any dip in service or dip in things, and in other cases, we did, and some of those are not definable, I understand, but, you know, if we could, I think we can mine this for some crime trends, some, it could have budget implications, a lot of things, but, but what it was, was all just raw data, and so just from one man's reading, I could have had more if there was some narrative and some perspectives surrounding it, so.
Okay, we, I've, I want to do one quick check before we go back, because I've been trying to say we'd be done at nine o'clock for our meetings, we do have a couple of items on our work session agenda, the transportation project priorities, we've been all excited to hear about specifically, and so, and then we also wanted to discuss live streaming council meetings, which is just a quick check-in, do we want to try to tackle these transportation priorities tonight, or is there a, an idea to perhaps postpone that discussion till we have a little more time, we can go into executive session?
As for me, I'm getting close to bedtime, and the time when I don't think very well, and I really would like to have a good discussion about these transportation priorities.
I think they deserve more attention than, let's get done now, so I would agree with Counselor Scharmer to postpone this, that conversation.
I would as well.
Okay, thanks, I think we'll, we'll put that off till next time, Russ, thank you very much, so.
And just to note, it might not be next time, we're really congested on the next agenda, too, so we'll, we'll have to look at maybe the next couple meetings, see where we can slide that in, so.
Yeah, being May 21st, after budget. Budget, yeah.
Yeah. We could call an emergency meeting where we just come in and discuss it.
I don't think it's an emergency.
Okay, we'll discuss that maybe amongst ourselves, but for now-
It's not a use it or lose it between now and May, something, okay, that's good to know, all right.
And I'm, I'm, I will have the quick discussion about live streaming these meetings, we now have the technical capacity to do so, Independence has that, it required hardwiring, and we've been able to manage that, and our WIMPAG Community Access Coordinator just wanted to make sure that that was going to be acceptable to folks, we didn't have any particular reason or objections to live streaming our meetings from this point forward.
Yes.
Since I do know, since I watch other live streaming board meetings, amazingly enough, I know you can comment during them, will we have access to those comments that are being made, if there's questions or anything that come up?
I have no clue how it works.
I don't think we can monitor that, just because we don't have the staffing, right? So we don't have somebody here watching the video as it's going to get those questions, that could potentially happen in the future.
Yeah, I would like to make sure that if things do come up, that we do have an opportu- I mean, oftentimes, it's just hearts, good job, like it, like it, but sometimes there are actually questions, so.
That would be a great objective on our road to achieving our goal of Monmouth is a self-governing city.
And Lane may have to look up and see, if there's any particular restrictions about-
She ain't knew that, yeah, I'd, I'd not heard of that going on.
Public comments on that forum.
Or a little bing, and, oh, question.
Little hearts and little smiley faces.
Yeah.
What is the venue that this would be livestreamed at?
What's that?
Where would this be livestreamed, is it Facebook, or there, there's a number of places?
It would be Facebook, that's what she was discussing with me, yes.
All right, so we will take a three-minute break, and then we'll meet in the back in executive session, and representatives of the news media are specifically directed to not report on deliberations during executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced, any person in attendance, including the news media, who has a recording device is directed to turn it off, if during the course of the executive session, a representative of the news media believes this council has made an error in our deliberations, please notify us, and we will be in executive session when we return.
Madam Mayor, I don't think we have any news media, you can exclude news media from a labor negotiation session.
Oh, yeah, and I didn't do that properly.
I think you typically do.
Sorry, yes, we do.
Huh?
We typically do.
Yeah, that's been my experience, but I don't think we have any media here.
Just stay up here.
So we'll just-
Just stay up here, there's, it's, it's going to take a couple minutes, no reason to transition.
Oh, so we're not, we're not going to take a break for three minutes?
Take a break, you're getting a cookie on the way out.
We are going to take a break for three minutes, because, and then we will be returning, and we will be in executive session here, thank you.